Okay, let's call the meeting to order of April 1st, 2019, City Council Agenda. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Christina, can you call the roll?
Yes. Bastian.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Housman.
Here.
Parsons.
Present.
Wakefield.
Here.
Mayor Lombard.
Here.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the agenda. Any additions, deletions, or changes?
Item 11D and 11G will take office.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve approval of the minutes from March 14th, 18th, and 19th. Any changes?
I would just add that the March 18th regular meeting, second to last sentence, that we would add in there that Mayor Lombard stepped out prior to executive session.
Thank you.
So moved as amended?
Second. Yeah, second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of March 14th, 18th, and 19th, with March 18th being amended slightly. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the approver of our bills and claims as submitted in your board packet. Any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the bills and claims as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now is the time for public input. Anybody that's wishing to address the board may do so at this point?
Yes, I will.
Okay, come on up to the podium here, the microphone, so we can get you on.
So we can get you on.
Yep, tape.
Brought some chicken scraps.
Over on the microphone, push the purple button and then say your name and address, please, sir.
Paul Vanderlinde, 500 Beach Nut.
I'm on the street, interstate. Well, it's not gonna save. Well, I'll put the other side.
There you go.
I don't work.
That's tough. It's gonna be tough. I live over on 500 Beach Nut, Beach Nut and Second Avenue. I've lived in Brandon area for approximately 36 years. Married 36. Du Bois graduated out of Brandon. My wife graduated out of Brandon. During our water problem, this last few weeks, I just wanted to bring up a sketch and see if what we could do come some kind of conclusion for it. I know it's been brought up here once before. I think Bart Jones was sitting here once talking about this. So, we'll start right here. We got the elementary school, track field. This is all about drainage, is what this is for, okay? Got the high school football field. Here's 3rd, 4th, 5th, 6th, 7th Avenue, East Elm. What we got here is the paint would be in direction of the flow of water. And the blue would be the water, but I mean with it. Right now, I live approximately right there, okay? Right now, we have all this water that drains from Seventh. I don't know about the football field. I think it's got its own place to drain. But I know Seventh Avenue comes down to Conifer, is where it's at. Sixth Avenue due to the lay of the yellow base of the land. It'll come like this, come like this, come like this. All this water's coming down here, Conifer. Okay, Conifer? We got a nice little cement drain here. And it angles over like this. And then it runs into dirt here. Or pond of, or whatever the drains need as for it, okay? Elementary school has a culvert here, that's drainage. Nice little cement pad here going into across the street. The street's just got a little, one of them drainage going across the street, okay? That's a lot of water. And we found out how much water it was. I used to dump it 10 to 12 inches in my backyard. Came in over my e dress windows. Never happened. That's why I would cook it with some kind of solution for this. What happened, I don't know how they keep it be the water. This would hold. But where, where is this supposed to drain to? I guess that's where, a question I have. All this water running down into here, running into here. Say, let me know where that's supposed to drain to. I got an idea right now where it's supposed to drain. There's approximately 68 inch deep, about two foot, dirt trails. That's going down. All that water. I mean, we got bigger access up here. This is going, I was going to talk to my people that's up here. And here, Bart Jones used to live here. What this does, comes down this way, takes off that way, and runs down Second Avenue as. Roman is taking it from here. But what happened here, this is not enough drainage to hold it, to have that amount of water. So, in my case, I live right here. Water's flowing, can't make that turn, keeps going straight. I end up with this in my backyard. 10 to 12 inches over my e dress window in my basement. That's my story.
It was an extraordinary circumstance, sir, with the three inches of rain that we had with frozen ground. I'm sure what contributed to that factor that no water was going into the ground.
Correct. And that's where this comes into play. Where is that water supposed to go?
That water is supposed to go where it is going.
On that little dirt there?
Yep.
So, a couple of things to add into this discussion. This summer, we're actually planning on doing a stormwater study. And so, I'll add your name to the list of concerned landowners through there. And that is one of the, kind of the hotspots that we're going to take a look at. We're also going to send out a request for proposals for redoing the entire core area. So, within the next couple of years, we hope to reconstruct the core area. And part of that will be adding in storm sewer. So, in the next couple of years, we will have a solution for this area.
Yeah, but well, I think Bart Jones and Hugh have been here, set some actions to get done at that time. And they did come and put a little approach thing right there to remove this water. But that's not quite the solution that we need for that area.
I'm sorry that happened to you. That's a big mess.
Yeah.
It is. It's costing me a lot of money. I contacted furniture, of course, they know what that type of stuff is. Some come straight out of my pocket. My basement was folded for me. I had carpet. Apparently she knocked out. I have pictures. I have pictures of the water flow. Pictures of my basement. I don't think I need, you all can understand what's going on here. And I know this is not enough drainage. Anybody can figure that out. It's got a nice cement up here that will relieve, you know, this stuff coming in here. My neighbor over here was coming straight at him. He's a little higher elevation than I am. And that's why it came out like that. I had to take three turns to get across the street. I'd like to come up with some kind of resolution for this.
Have you had problems before, sir?
No.
Which exacerbates the point that I made with, it was a very unusual circumstance this year with that deluge of rain with frozen ground. It just would not go into the ground. And we had a lot of problems all throughout town.
And with the rain on top of it.
Right, three inches.
Yes. That's been helped. But that's something we gotta plan for. It's kind of like Gordon Seagull. You never know if you're gonna need it till you do.
Understand. Understand. Well, it sounds like we have a plan to try to take a look at that. And I was just thinking, there might be some possibility with detention pond on the school property too, I suppose. That's already in the works.
That would be ideal.
Yeah.
Because it was.
My day, my day job is the business manager for the school district, so.
Yeah, I know.
I could, I could, I can imagine what that's going to be entailing.
Yeah, I know that. Well, and I know, you know, they got a real nice cement over in on the school property. And this nice old cement pad taking it off of the school property over there. So, I'll try to keep, I'll do that.
Tammy will stay in touch with you.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for listening.
Anyone else that wishes to address the board? If not, our next order of business?
I wouldn't hear.
Oops, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Bart, go ahead.
So, I just wanted to point out, I think it kind of got buried in our agenda last meeting. And so, the water report has, has it come out in the water bill yet? Okay. The water report is out in the water bill, and I believe it's also on the website. And I wanted to point out that we, for 18 consecutive years, have surpassed the, our EPA standards. We got the President's Award. We're at a number two for radium. And I think that's something that should be celebrated and publicized. You know, we've had some reports at KSFY and Kelloland. And I think it would be great if we would have a follow-up story, and we would tell them where we're at now. So, I just wanted to point that out, and I wanted to get it on the record, and I wanted to get it in the minutes. And our newspaper is here. And I think we need to celebrate some of these things. So, we are at a two for radium.
Just to clarify that for the audience, that the minimum standard, I think, is five. And five peccaries, or whatever geological term that they use. And the city in their test was at two. So, substantially below the required level.
And then, I just wanted to take just a moment here to take the time to congratulate Lieutenant Ellis on his retirement. Today was his last day. I had the opportunity to listen to the 5 o'clock page for his, his last day. And truly want to thank him for everything that he's done to our community and with our police department. So, I wish him the best as he goes on his next journey of retirement.
Congratulations. Best of luck to Mr. Ellis. Carrying forward, we got a couple proclamations for a few of my favorite fellows out here in the audience. We have a proclamation of 2019-2, which is the Loyalty Day proclamation. And 2019-3, which is the Buddy Poppy's proclamation. So, you want these gentlemen to stand and get in front of the camera, Brian, or Christina? Well, get somebody up here with a better looking face than mine. Come on, Kenny.
Come on, Kenny.
I'm gonna read a few wheresses and heretofores. Proclamation 2019-2 is the proclamation of the Loyalty Day Parade. It goes as such. Whereas the citizens of this city are extremely proud of the nation's more than 200-year heritage of freedom and are loyal to the ideals, traditions, and institutions that have made our nation so great. And whereas their obvious dedication to the way of life is indicative of a strong, continued desire to preserve the priceless American heritage. And whereas they will be proud to stand up and publicly declare their determination toward actively and positively safeguarding our freedoms against any foreign and domestic enemies. Therefore, I, Paul Lombard, Mayor of Brandon, South Dakota, hereby call upon my fellow citizens to take full advantage of the special occasion known as Loyalty Day, celebrated annually throughout the nation on the 5th day of May as an incentive for every true American to reaffirm his or her love of the flag and country. And I urge all individuals, schools, churches, organizations, and business establishments and homes within this official jurisdiction to proudly display the flag of the United States of America and participate in public patriotic Loyalty Day activities, which are co-sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States and others on Loyalty Day, May 5th, 2019. Thank you, gentlemen, for your loyalty day and for your service. Special honor. Thank you so much. Our second proclamation, 2019-03, is for the Buddy Poppies. Whereas the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since 1922. And whereas the VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans. And the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the public purpose of the annual sale of Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore, I, Paul Lombard, Mayor of Brandon, South Dakota, hereby urge the citizens of this committee to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for distribution of these symbols of appreciation for our sacrifices of the honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy as a mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defensive freedoms, which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kenny, thank you. Thanks for your service.
Kenny, if you're gonna hit the audience, you'll have to take my billfold with you, but I know my wife does not have any money. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We'll move on, like Kenny does a little bit of salesmanship there. The golf course committee report, we have a big agenda, so I wanted to move on.
Before you move on, you have to approve the parade and the parade route.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the parade and parade route. Second.
Motion is second to approve the parade and parade route. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Golf course committee report, we have some summer staff to approve. We have a list of summer staff. Any questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second to approve the listed summer staff. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The police committee report. Chief Cole, would you like to press the mic and present some new staff, I think you have?
If I press it, it'll turn it off.
Don't do that.
Don't turn it off.
Okay, well, we're happy to introduce, formally introduce a couple of people that some of you may not have seen before. The first one up is going to be the recent hire that we made. This is Seth Blumgren. Seth comes with, from us, to us from Lennox as of late. And then also was with Sioux Falls Police Department for a period of time. Want to say aye?
Good to meet you all.
I gotta make him talk, you know.
I know, I'm on nights right now, so I don't get to see many of you very often, so.
Welcome aboard.
Nice to put faces on the names.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. And next, someone you have met. This is Joe. Joe's first official day. I call him the Chief 2.0. Since I'm still here. I'm 1.0. So, he did come. He arrived on time. 15 minutes early. That's a good thing.
Very good.
I know Dave's done a great job leading the police department. 2.0 doesn't necessarily mean new and improved, but I hope to sustain what he's already established and grow with the city of Brandon, and I'm just so proud to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you, welcome.
Thanks. Thank you, chief. Welcome aboard, gentlemen. We have a fire department report in your packet tonight. Anything that we need to note publicly? Brian?
No.
Okay. We need to surplus handgun for Sergeant Lieutenant Wade Ellis. If I can have a motion, or chief?
I have to read into the record what the handgun is. It's a Glock Model 17, Gen 4. Serial number is BEAG240.
Otherwise known as Wade's gun?
Otherwise known as Wade's pistol, yes.
There we go. Can I have a motion to declare?
Second.
Motion is second to declare surplus handgun? Any further discussion? It'll be turned over to Mr. Ellis. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a couple of annual salary reviews we'll take individually. First one is on Paul Clark. Wage adjustment there. If I can have a motion?
Don't move.
Motion is second to approve the wage adjustment and annual review of Paul Clark. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I also have an annual salary review and adjustment for Austin Peterson. If I could have a motion on that?
Make a, oh, second.
Motion is second to approve the annual salary review and adjustment on Austin Peterson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9, the Park and Recreation Committee report. They have a work report listed in your packet. And they also have some summer staff that we'll need approval on.
I would make a motion to approve those, may I?
Motion is second to approve the summer staff for the Park and Rec Department. All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We also, item 9C, we have a concession agreement with the Parks and Recs Department. Any comments, Devin?
Oh, that's basically just an update.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve that, mayor?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the concessions agreement as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 9D is the Sunrise Park surfacing bid that Devin recently opened up. Would you like to speak on that, Devin?
Yep. We received three total bids, two from Cunningham Recreation and one from Crouch. Base bid was for a port-in-place surface, and we had an alternate bid for a synthetic turf surface. I am recommending that we go with this synthetic turf surface from Cunningham Recreation for the amount of $92,271.50. Our budget was $100,000.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Motion is second. Any questions or comments on the bid to approve the bid for synthetic turf surface? That is hard to say once, let alone a couple times. Any discussion?
So, do we have any additional expenses to this, whether it be hooking up to storm sewer, drainage, that kind of stuff? Do we know what that is yet?
The drainage is in the bids, as far as them getting it out. If it's hooked up to storm sewer, which I don't know if they want to do that yet or not. You know, that's in-house work that we can always do. You know, the storm sewer pipe is right there. So, if there is that expense, it's not going to be very much. It might be some labor, more than anything else. And we don't know exactly how they want to, I don't know if they want to do that yet or not. They have it in their specs though, to do drainage, you know, get that out, going out there for either one, so.
And then, is this something that's something that's extremely important for that park, or where we're at with that?
Yeah.
Right now, it's got gravel in it and.
Sand, yep.
Sand, yep.
Yep. Ideally, we'd like to get all the parks updated to some sort of other surface than the sand. Sand is not ADA accessible. All these surfaces are. And you know, that park up there, it has drainage issues right now as it is. So, if we get a good rain, it's a swimming pool, more than a playground, so.
So, the most important part here is, is the ADA compliance, then you would say, for?
Yeah, I would say so. Yep. You know, we've done the sand in the past, just because playgrounds are expensive. You know, you spend a lot on the equipment. Sand is cheap. But it's time to start modernizing everything, you know, getting it all up to code. It's gonna take a while, but.
And sand and woodchips don't have near the safety.
Correct. Yes, this has a lot better fall rating.
That this new surfacing will have.
Yep.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the bid for field, synthetic field turf surfacing. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Devin.
Thank you.
Thanks for your research. You and Tammy on that.
We have an annual salary review and adjustment for Park Superintendent Devin Coughlin. If I could have a motion on that?
I would move that, mayor?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the annual salary review and adjustment on our Park Superintendent Devin Coughlin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, Administrative Committee Report. We have a list of volunteers. Very cool list of volunteers that helped sandbag the city of Brandon with our recent rains and floods and everything else that didn't quite get to the level that we were planning for, but that's a good thing. That's a good thing. I need a motion to approve those volunteers.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion is second to approve the volunteer list as presented in our packet tonight. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Representing the citizens that hold us accountable, but it's also our duty to listen to those in the trenches fighting the battles we don't see trying to find common ground to accomplish this mission. No matter how you look at the process and what your views are, I encourage each of my council members to take the time and intently ask questions, no matter how raw and how painful those answers might be, as I believe there is power in listening. I have faith in the process and believe that we can rebuild the trust needed to develop healthy working relationships throughout the city. Our employers, employees are passionate about working for and are very proud to be a part of our community, and they bring a unique set of talents and values that will help us seek solutions for a brighter future.
Thank you for that Brett. I, I truly believe that if we go back to the agent of record, which Casey was and has been for quite a few years, that he can give us the same amount and he can give us different quotes, all we have to do is ask him. We've never asked him. We've never reached out to him and said, hey, can you give us quotes? We've never asked him. As a council, we've never asked him. And we owe that to our city employees to ask him to give us the quotes that we want. For our city employees, that's my take on it.
Brian, if I can ask, is the agent of record tied just strictly with Wellmark?
Currently, yes. As far as for Wellmark, I'm not sure how the other ones would do it.
Anybody can bid it.
Correct. And that's what we had planned to do last fall.
So the compromise is again, just one clear, to keep, to change the agent of record to Casey. But then go and have work sessions that would involve both of the agents.
Excuse me, I would agree with Joe. I think that Casey can give us quotes on the small plans and the large plans. And we've had some discussions about, you know, some alternatives available to us in that grandfather plan. So I'd like to give him direction to do that for us and see what he comes back with. And if he, if he fails, then next year, Casey, I'm looking at somebody else. I'm just teasing you.
Barb, would you not want this other agent involved in this whole work session process?
Well, I, I, I think that Casey can give us what we need.
Yep.
I guess if he can't, then I would expect him to tell us that he can't and we bring in somebody else. But I respect his service to us over the years. I think he can provide that. I'm not an insurance person. I don't even know what I need to ask.
So along this process, the biggest thing that's been on my mind is it's time to get competitive quotes. The main reason that I changed my mind last meeting to take and reconsider this is because I didn't have a good feel that we were going to save the city money by going to a different representative. And if I'm going to make a decision on behalf of the constituents that I represent, the biggest concern is, is it going to save us money as a community and is it going to keep our employees, to keep our awesome employees here? And I, I didn't feel I had enough information to make that decision. Now, I think the quote process that is being discussed by Dana and this motion that we have on the floor makes an absolute ton of sense because it gives us the ability to do competitive quotes. When you go shop for a car, you, you shop around, there's so many things that you do when you're doing competitive quotes. And to be honest, if you're asking for the person that's selling you a product to tell you when they can't do it anymore, I've never had a salesman tell me that they can't do it. I think it's not prudent for us to wait for, for someone, whether it's Mr. Sanio or someone else that's selling us a product, to make a statement like that.
Tim, Casey has a fiduciary responsibility.
Your thing, Madam.
Casey has a fiduciary responsibility to us, so I would assume that what he gives us is going to be accurate. And for you to say that a salesperson never, that always fudges, I am sorry, but I take offense at that.
And I may go back to, all we have to do is ask him. All we have to do is ask him to give us quotes. He'll give it to us.
I just want to make another point here because anybody can do quotes. What I think we have really been lacking and why we've been stuck in a plan from the 1980s is we need advice. We need counsel from a professional. That's, that's a big thing that I do in my industry. We just had a nice household come in last week that had a million dollar umbrella and left with a $2 million umbrella. That was because of conversation. It was because of discussion. And that's the kind of thing that happens when you go and you seek counsel. I think it's similar in Barb's world. People don't go to her and say, I know exactly what I want to do with my, my investment portfolio. I think they go to her and seek advice and information and ideas, and she provides them with guidance. And I think that's what we're really lacking because none of us are health insurance experts. So that's what started this whole process, was a little bit of glimmer into what other options existed out there that we're not looking into was what had some light shed onto it last summer. And that's why we started to look at this whole process. And it's just been, it's been really frustrating to not be able to get anywhere with it. So I would just propose that we backtrack and put things in motion to be able to do what we all, this whole council agreed to do that last fall. And we ran out of time and we had to put everything on hold, and now we're to this point today. And we're running out of time again.
So, did I hear you correctly? Did you state that Mr. Sanio's not a professional?
No, I did not state that.
Because you said we need a professional to give us quotes.
We need a professional.
We don't need to tell somebody, go give us a quote for this, 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 and this. Because like Brett just alluded to, we don't even know what our goals are, what we're trying to accomplish. So to go and send somebody out packing to get quotes isn't ever going to help us accomplish what our long-term goals are. We need advice and counsel and a professional in the industry to come and educate us. Not us tell them, go quote $1,500 deductibles and $2,500 deductibles and $5,000 deductibles. We're working this the wrong way, in my opinion.
Again, Mr. Sanio is an expert. He's a professional. He's been, he's had us for 21 years. I really take offense to you acting like he's not a professional to the fact that we as a council have to come up with, and maybe, you know what, maybe we need to go back and ask our employees or, you know, get some input. The survey, if you read the survey, surely states that they're happy with the plan.
So Dana, you would suggest that they just allow the agents to quote whatever they feel fit for?
In our last personnel committee, when we had moved forward, we had moved forward with getting a renewal quote as is. And then our plan was to ask Lisa, who was at that time appointed as our agent, to provide us with a variation of alternate quotes in the large group plan and to come and help us understand what all those could accomplish, the pros and cons, the money, what else we could look at with potential freed-up savings to make our plan more comprehensive. Actually, had tons and tons of ideas. And that's, that's what sparked all of this, was all of those ideas.
Right. I, can I have one more comment here?
Just a second. The only, I, I under, I think I understand where you're going, but I get a little nervous when we don't have guidelines of, you said to just open it up, and so we're going to have just a mass range, as I see it.
That's why I amended, when we did this RFP, I amended it so that it was within our budget. So there isn't a vast range. It's, it's options within our defined budget.
Jim?
So I guess the one comment, I, I had an opportunity to review the questions and answers of both candidates. One of the things that I typically watch for is potential liability and risk. I want to ensure that all the council members had the opportunity to review this information in question number seven that was asked of both of the insurance carriers. The one concern that I had was the low amount of E and O claim coverage that Mr. Sanio had versus A.H. Gallagher, and that's particularly just due to the size of the companies. I think if we're going to move forward with a, continue to move forward with Mr. Sanio, I'd like to see that E and O become a more applicable size to what we're looking at now. In this case, the question was asked, how would you cover it if it was a two and a half million E and O? And there was some discussion, and Mr. Sanio stated that he didn't know how, how he would handle it, which is part of it, right? We need to understand that. So there's a potential risk there, and I want to make sure that we understand the entire process.
He did actually, oh, I'm sorry, Barb. He did actually say he would be willing to increase his E and O to offset it, so we're good there.
There's a motion on the floor.
Once again, though, back on that issue, it becomes an issue of what we as a board say is the limit of E and O. We can't just arbitrarily go out there and say that if one has $10 million of E and O and one has $2 million of E and O, the one with 10 is better than the one with 2. It's, it's, I have a motion to change, and help me with this, change the agent of record back to Casey Sanio for the Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield policy and seek quotes for health insurance.
From the other agents.
From other agents, which would include Sanio, I would assume. They could bid Wellmark or the...
You can only bid one carrier. You can't?
No, no, no. You can bid whatever you want. It's wide open.
You can't, no one else can bid Wellmark except for the agent that has Wellmark. The renewal is totally locked down. So if we're going to be fair, you have to do it by carrier. And I don't care which has which. If one wants to have Wellmark and the other agent has, opens, provides quotes to the other carriers, but they can't go and both provide United Healthcare quotes to us and both qualify Unite, Avera. I mean, it's just a waste of time. We don't need to look at...
Because they're the same quotes, right?
Right. They're the same quotes. Avera's price to Casey is going to be the same price as Avera's quote to Lisa. So we need to be more efficient with what we're asking.
I don't think you're being efficient at all with what you're asking in this motion.
Correct. If we want to be efficient, we should have one agent do all the quotes.
Exactly.
Because if I'm dealing with two agents and two censuses and getting employees to fill out forms, it's going to be mass confusion.
Absolutely.
So my recommendation would be choose an agent that we can get all of the quotes from, and we can get ideas from both as to what we want to do with our insurance policy. That's fine. Make some modifications to it, make some recommendations to it, but dealing with two agents is going to be pretty tough.
So the motion really needs to be split, because there's two separate subjects.
Motion needs to be rescinded, I think.
Yes, you are correct, Barb. I would agree with that, that logic. We're going to go with this first motion first. We got to take care of that. The motion is to name Casey Sanio as the agent of record on the Wellmark Blue Cross Blue Shield plan and allow Lisa Markle, Maka, to submit quotes on the other carriers. Quote, pardon?
Correct.
Call the question.
Ashton.
Name.
Clark.
Aye.
Fish.
Name.
Housman.
Nope.
Parsons.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Mary, it's 3-3.
3-3?
Yeah, you get the, you get to vote.
You get to vote.
It's the first time, isn't it?
I would vote no.
Does not pass.
So, I will make a motion to put Casey back on as the agent of record and to do what we had talked about, come up with some ideas, some different strategies. I'm sure he's quite capable of doing that. We just need to ask him to do that. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and second to put Casey Sanio as the agent of record and ask for alternatives from him specifically with any and all different carriers. Christina, call the roll. Or any discussion.
So I want to be clear that this motion makes it so that we are not allowed to take in any quotes from alternative sources. Is that correct?
Alternative agents, I would, yes, yes. I would believe that is correct, which, as we spoke with before, all agents will receive the same quote. Correct, Brian?
Correct.
Any other discussion, questions?
But as seen in the RFP process, not, not all agents have the same commission rates, so there may be potential for different total package cost.
Where do you see that at? Because currently, they're both at the same rate per employee.
In the RFP, there was different commission rates. Okay, because on our questionnaires...
Yeah, for the ancillary services. The other were close to the same. And I would also then add, do we have an idea what our E and O target is? You know, what is the industry standard for that? If we're asking, there's a difference between the two, do we have an industry standard that we can set forth as well as part of this so that we can move forward with this process? I would leave that up to Brian. I think to check with some of the people in the industry and see what are, what would be an appropriate level for this type of size of policy, this size of group. It's, it's going to be different from the Brandon Valley School District than it is with the City of Brandon. You just have a lot more exposure and liability on a larger group. So I would have you check with similar-sized organizations and see if we're adequately covered with our current E and O or if it needs to be changed.
My concern is if we increase the E and O requirement, there's an increased cost to the agent, which could impact the cost per employee and so forth. So the results in the RFP may have changed, just to think about it.
Oh, I thought you said, I have a question. You said call the question. Okay.
Let's move along.
Go ahead, Christina.
Ashton.
Aye.
Clark.
Name.
Fish.
Aye.
Housman.
Aye.
Parsons.
Name.
Wakefield.
Name.
Mary gets to vote. 3-3.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do you know how rare that is when Mary gets to vote?
No, vote twice.
Twice.
Okay, so then where do we go from here? What do we do now?
I don't know, we're all kind of...
I'd like to see a schedule of work sessions to see.
Okay. Great.
I'll leave that up to you, Brian.
Yep.
Everyone caught up?
Yep.
Item number 10C, Avera Employee Assistance Program Agreement. We need an approval on that?
Correct. And this, this is for both the City of Brandon and the Brandon Volunteer Fire Department. The fire department reimburses us for their costs.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the Avera Employee Assistance Program Agreement. Any questions?
I work for Avera and currently have used the EAP in the past. Do I need to recuse myself from the vote?
I would say if you have a direct culinary interest, you would recuse yourself, but I don't know that your position at Avera would be that tied in.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record know that Mr. Wakefield was absent from this vote. Christina?
Okay.
Item 10D, MedStar Ambulance Insurance Report. Brian?
There, there's an article in the paper. Jay was, Mr. Major was going to try beer unless he got called out on a run. But council member, Brett talked to me about the article that was in last week's paper outlining an ambulance insurance program. It was included in your packet. This is a concept that, that Mr. Major had talked about a little bit, you know, as we all, as we've discussed for quite a while. Funding for emergency medical services throughout the state is, is fairly tough. So this was just a theory or theoretical idea that, that Mr. Major had to help fund EMS throughout the state. So it's nothing that he's, he's working on hard. It's just a theory that he wanted to discuss at some point in time with the council.
So we don't have to do...
No, no action required at this time.
Okay.
I will certainly invite Mr. Major back to another meeting.
Because I've got lots of questions.
Yeah, there's, yeah, it's, it's, we don't know if it's legal, you know, here in the state of South Dakota. If it is, then we certainly have to work with the municipal league to, to come up with legislation that would allow it. And how would, how would we implement it? Would it be a public vote? Would it be a council vote? How would you come up with the cost to compute the monthly fee, et cetera? Would you allow people to opt out? There's, there's a ton of questions. But it's, it's a theor, it's a theory.
I would suggest that we, no, Lisa, we're not looking into all these theories until we have a little bit more guidance.
I've got nothing on this.
Let's continue that process. We'll wait for you to schedule a report, Brian, and, and then we can go from there and maybe contact our lobbyist for the municipal league, Ms. Taylor.
And see what she thinks.
See if she has some advice on that. Okay, thank you. One, one thing on that, too. The reason why I put this on the agenda was I thought Mr. Major got the cart in front of the horse on this process and kind of left us kind of hanging on what, what the ideas were and how do we communicate that with our, with the citizens that we represent. So if we can make sure that he's here for that next meeting, that would be awesome. You definitely got some conversation going that was probably not warranted in the community. I would agree with that assessment. Item 10E, Ambulance Ordinance Draft.
Chuck and Brett have been working on a draft revision to our ambulance ordinance. We borrowed this, borrowed loosely, from the county. So this is just a very rough draft with what we would be looking to make the ordinance revisions for. You know, some of the, the highlights and jump in if I miss something. You know, it outlines the duties in much more detail of the medical director, what they're responsible for. It outlines what we're looking for as far as a quality assurance program. It's a two-year license. Trying to think of the others. Yeah, those, those are the, the big ones. The duties of the medical director, and that would be the licensee's medical director. Although I think something that we should look at, Minnehaha County has their own medical director. I think that if, if, if we could talk to the county and get an agreement with them that their medical director could also act as ours, would be beneficial. I don't necessarily think we want to have our own medical director. The county also has a medical, emergency medical division as part of their, I think it's sheriff's department now. So we don't, we don't want our own EMS division. We want to piggyback off somebody else's. But much more detail about QA and, and the medical director, and it also includes what happens if we want to terminate the contract, if we need to, the notices that are required, et cetera. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, Brett, but we were also in agreement that we felt when the time is right that we should be having these discussions with the county. So I hope everybody's supportive of that.
And Brian left his, his name out. I mean, Brian, you equally worked as hard, harder, obviously, than we have. We had several meetings about this. I, I agree that the major changes that you would see if you compared the older ordinance, which I think they did a nice job, was that the quality assurance, I think, was lacking. I think also the direction of what the duties were of the medical director. And also, was there anything in this, in specific, since we're funding partially the 911 services for Brandon, to make sure that the city is being taken care of in case that ambulance service would be on a Minnehaha County run? Do we have something in this ordinance that states that the city, I'm not saying it's first, but do we have something that protects us, that allows our community citizens to have access with that funding? It seems to me, I read that, but I can't remember where.
It's, it's in there. They're responsible for providing EMS services, you know, 365 days a year, 24 hours a day. And they also have to have a signed mutual aid agreement with another provider. So I think right now MedStar has seven rigs that they have out, or can have out. So if all seven are gone, and it does happen from time to time, they would need to have a mutual aid agreement with, I would imagine, P+ or Paramedics Plus to come over and do that. And they, they've called them in from time to time. The other thing of note, we do put in there a definition of response time. 90% of all Priority 1 and Priority 2 calls, response time, and that is from the time that they are dispatched to the time they arrive on scene, is eight minutes 59 seconds. So that's significantly different than state statutes, which is from the time the call, how's that go? It's the time the call is dispatched to the time they acknowledge the call, not just on scene. So there's a pretty significant difference there. We're looking at a much smaller geographic region than the county as well. But certainly read it, review it. If you have any questions or comments, contact Chuck, Brett, or myself, and, and we'll plug them in.
Thank you for your time, Brett, on this. I know you spent some time, and Chuck also.
Team member.
Those guys get paid for it, though. So I'm sticking you guys out there and saying, thank you for your additional efforts on that. And an ordinance just can be passed, Brian? It doesn't need multiple hearings or...
Two.
Two hearings?
Ordinance requires two readings.
Two readings? Okay, so it'll come back?
Oh, yeah, we'll come back. This, like I said, this is just a rough draft. You know, Lisa hasn't reviewed it yet, so she'll review it. I'm sure she'll have a couple of comments. So I would anticipate a first reading, you know, later this month or, or in May.
Okay. So we won't even consider this the first reading?
No.
Gotcha. Gotcha. I'm with you now. Christina, we have an annual report to be presented for 2018.
Yeah, you have in front of you the 2018 annual report. What do you want me to highlight?
What would you like to highlight?
I don't know. Um, I can go through a few things. Maybe the best thing is to start with what will kind of be published in the, in the Towards the end, the annual report, this is what will be published in the paper. It goes over a overview of our general fund and our major funds and then our other governmental So this is what will be in the paper. I'll get that off to the paper yet this week. General fund, roughly around $2 million is what it, we took in last year. Some of that is transfers in, so really more around 1.6. Street maintenance fund did make a little bit of $69,000. Third cent sales tax, we did lose almost $500,000 because we did buy some land. And then the other governmental funds are all our other small, smaller funds. The water, sewer, electric, and golf course. Water did do all right. I'm going to go back to a different page because it gives a more broad... Like the water fund, the operating income was around $382,000. Sewer fund, our operating loss, actually was $174,000. We did do some, quite a few capital projects in the sewer fund last year, so some of that's due to that. Electric fund is $15,000 income, and then the golf course, obviously, operating income or loss was $211,000 with a transfer in from the general fund for $270,000. The weather did not cooperate very well for that golf course this year, last year. Really, the, we added this year some year-end financial data summaries. I'll get those posted on the website as well as in the annual report on there as well. But that gives a good overview of each of the funds, what we budgeted, what our actual is. is, revenues, expenditures, and then what our fund balance is at the end of the year. If we didn't quite, our expenditures didn't quite meet our budget, I kind of noted a few reasons why on those, those funds. Other than that, we were fairly close on, on some of them, so. I just encourage anybody who has any questions on the annual report to please contact me, email me with any questions. Governmental annual reports are a little bit, quite a bit different than private companies. There are quite a few pages in here. You really have to look at it as a whole, rather than picking one item out and not looking at the, the whole report. Any other questions?
Christina, I asked during the briefing what the, I'll just ask it again for everyone else, what the third piece sales tax is used for?
Thirty cent.
Specific, isn't it?
Yeah, third cent, yeah, it's specific on what you can spend that money for. A few items is land, architectural fees.
Athletic facilities, or athletic programs.
Programs.
Our expenditures in 2018 were for land?
Yes.
That land being the park?
Yep, the Peterson property we purchased south of Askel Park.
Questions for Christina?
Thanks for getting it done.
Yes. Otters will be here at the end of the month.
Yeah, I would get that out on the website, and anything that you can asterisk and explain would be helpful, as you have in the back two pages there, why things are above or beyond or below. Any other questions from the board, council?
Immediate motion to approve.
Please.
Second.
Motion to second. Now, are there any other questions? All is in favor, signify by saying aye to accept the annual report?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Christina.
Item 10G is administrative policies. This is Marso.
I handed out the latest revision to you.
So following our last meeting, I made some changes to 1A, which your city administrator thought would work well in terms of when to get the information to the agenda. So I sent that out to you and explained it to you. So that's one area that has changed. The second area, I was hearing two different things in terms of to whom employees should visit before they come to full city council. So you have a B1 and a B2. B1 requires the employee to go through the chain of man, chain of command, including ending with the mayor before you come to the full city council. B has, you don't have to do the step of the mayor. So that is a decision for you to make. I put them both out there so that you guys can have some discussion, decide what you want to do with that. And then there's a may versus must in the, if the issue involves a city administrator, you must or you may go to the mayor first. So that's, those are your options in terms of what I've drafted. I can always redraft something, but that's what I was hearing from you, so.
And I think it's important that the mayor is involved before coming to full council, otherwise that mayor can be blindsided. And so I would vote for 1B, because that has the mayor in it.
Are there questions, discussion?
So is this, in essence, limiting the ability for staff to come talk to individual council members, or what's the intent here? Because I think this is kind of where it started from, so I, I don't want to have any of our staff feel like they can't talk to an individual.
Right, and this is for when the staff wants to come to be heard by the collective city council, and that's why I use the word collective city council. It doesn't inhibit somebody, Tammy, talking to a council member about a, a water project. This is where there is a work concern by an employee or group of employees that they want to be heard by the full city council, whoever's here. That's what this is designed for. Because we have two ordinances already, one where it says the city council shall not be involved in the administrative type of issues, and two, we have an ordinance provides the mayor supervises the employees and appointed officers. So this is just really designed for when employee or group of employees want to talk to the collective city council.
I'd agree with Barb.
So what do we have to do with this?
Well, we're going to be amending, then, the employee manual. So you could make a motion to adopt the administrative policies that are set forth as drafted using B1. Somebody could make the motion. And then I, I put in there must and may, and again, that's another issue you have to decide. So when you make the motion, is it that they, if we're going to say you've talked to the mayor, and I think that's what I'm hearing, is if the issue is with the city council, then they must also, you know, the step is the mayor. So it would be a motion to adopt this with B1 and use the word must. And then we could put it in the handbooks and have your administrative policies as well done.
Your amendment.
Well, just wait, because if we're going to amend the handbook, we do have a resolution.
Okay, so I don't have a handbook, I don't have a resolution draft for you tonight, so it can be done for next time, but.
Okay.
But I would like to know that that's what we want to do, because I've heard Barb now say something, and I think.
I agree with Barb.
I do, too.
Okay, so that's how I will draft the resolution up there.
B1 with the must.
Yep.
The must, yeah. Mm-hmm, thank you.
Okay. Street committee report, maintenance work reporters included, transit coordination plan, local funding. Tammy, give us a, or Brian, give us.
Yeah, this, this is for, if you remember the coordinated plan that the state requires us to do. Scott Fink at Interlakes went out and got quotes. CCOG was the low, low bid, a little bit less than what we talked about a couple of months ago. Their total price is $10,500, so our share of that will be $2,100. They will be sending down contracts with CCOG for your approval at the next council meeting.
Do we have to do anything on this now, tonight, Brian?
Yes, please, accept it, and then I can get the minutes up to Scott, and then he can get that, that process moving.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to second to approve the transit coordination plan, local funding plan, as
presented. CCOG is a little bitter. Any discussion or questions? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Annual slurry seal, including Holly Boulevard and Sandstone intersections. Tammy?
This is a project that we partner with the city of Sioux Falls. So they put out a whole bid set, and they had three bidders, and the Brandon's portion of that bid would be with Intermountain Slurry Seal, and that's $277,356.90. We currently have in the budget for $250,000, but if you remember back fall, if you remember last fall, we updated a traffic study at the intersection of Holly and Sandstone, and where a turning lane doesn't, isn't exactly warranted, it was recommended. In order to do that, we need to re-stripe what's out there, and we would have to use something kind of like the slurry seal project in order to get rid of the existing stripes. So there is a map in there. I think it's on page 96. And that kind of shows the limits of where we would be placing this lorry seal. And this intersection is a little bit tricky as far as those people in those, in that development only have one way in and one way out. So there's a lot of traffic control that's involved here, and they're only going to be able to do probably one lane a day. So they'd probably take three days to get this portion done. If we didn't do this with the slurry seal project, I think it would cost quite a bit more, just because of those existing pavement markings, so.
I had a resident reach out to me about this project. Do we have a timeline on that? And then also, their, what, one of their concerns was, is, is the road wide enough to accept a turn lane? And if it is, great. If not, can you kind of explain what process would have to take place for that?
So we did have it, oh, the schedule, first of all, would probably be in August sometime. That's typically when they make it to Brandon. That's up to the contractor, really, and the other neighboring towns, too. So there's a lot of coordination that goes into that, but we think that it will be mid-August. As far as the road being wide enough, it's barely wide enough to add in this turning lane. So there are a few safety concerns out there. There is a mailbox out there that will have to be removed. Those plans are already kind of in the works of being coordinated anyway, because it's not exactly safe for the mail carriers to be out there along this road. And one other thing to point out with this, no, I scratched that. It's pretty much just the mailbox. And then this was also coordinated with the county, so they're well aware of us re-striping it and adding that in.
So then the $27,000, that it's over the budget, includes this new striping plant?
It does, yep.
Do we have a place to take that overage out of the budget, or?
Correct. We have a balance in the street maintenance fee. It would cover it.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to second to approve the slurry seal project to include a re-striping of Holly and Sandstone. Is that the name of the street?
Let me add one more comment. The accidents that are happening at this intersection really is because the people are not paying attention, not because we don't have a turn lane. So people are still going to have to pay attention to know, to move over into the other lane so that they can go around. This isn't a fix-all here. This isn't, I mean, even a signal would probably increase traffic, so we'll have to pay attention.
Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 11E is an East River agreement.
This is for the Holly portion of the project. We are requesting that East River election, East River Electric moves their utility lines from the south side of the road to the north side of the road. In order for them to do that, it costs about $210,000. So this is just an agreement stating that we're paying for it.
Can I have a motion?
Move.
Motion to second to approve the agreement with East River for moving the utilities. Any discussion, questions?
Tammy, did you say from the south side to the north side?
Yes.
Can you just, real quick, what, the why? What's driving the fact that we're moving it from the south to the north?
We're widening, widening the road, and then Excel is going to raise some of their power lines on the north side, and then it'll go over there with those poles. So it's really combining them together.
All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number F, the Holly Boulevard Maintenance Agreement with Minnehaha County.
Since we are replacing the road up to the bridge, we are changing those jurisdiction requirements there, and so the count, this is just updating our existing maintenance agreement with them. It's pretty much just laying out who moves snow and when they do it, and who does the repairs to the road. So we would take over the portion up to the bridge. Right now, we don't have that whole portion. We just have up to the city limits.
Motion?
Move. Second.
Motion to second to approve the Holly Boulevard Maintenance Agreement with Minnehaha County as presented. Any questions? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, Water and Sewer Committee Reports Replacing Water Meters.
I would invite Brad up here. He's our Ferguson sales rep, so he'll go some through some stuff.
All right, good evening. My name is Bradley Klein with Ferguson Water Works. I've been working with the city now for a few years, and my company's been working with the community for, in the neighborhoods of 18, 19-plus years, with your water meters that are currently in the system. Over the last few years, we've been, just been kind of keeping an eye on the older radios that are out there, as indicated on the, the chart there that I created was about, about half your utilities got radios that are definitely not only past their warranty, but past their life expectancy. So we've absolutely had a great experience with these. We've, what I like to say is, won the battle. Now it's just coming back around to that part of maintaining it and replacing those units. They are going to start failing. We've seen a little bit of an increase here over the winter. I don't know if the weather had anything to do with that, that's, that could be possible, but we're starting to see more fall off the system and need a more proactive approach. This is not uncommon for it to come to this point where it's happening quicker. We always kind of forget that it's in the ground, it's down in someone's basement, we just out of sight, out of mind, until we start seeing it on a report. So we're kind of at that point now where we need to discuss, have a serious discussion about how we're going to address. And a little addition, Raleigh has been changing things out with Dale, just kind of as they fail rate, which is fine on one hand, but you'll always kind of be chasing it. I, I do believe there needs to be a little bit more proactive, because I think you'll just end up wearing out your, your employee, your associate chasing this while he's got other tasks to do, especially as more homes are being built, they're doing inspections and other things. This piece just needs to be kind of further reviewed.
We're presenting our package, I think, four options.
Yeah, yeah, let me break those down just a little bit. The first option, which, that I think would be kind of the most, somewhat of the easiest, and there's three within that option. One is just, if you'll give me a second. As of today, Raleigh just simply will have his staff go in, take off the existing register, typically just snip the wire of the radio that's mounted outside the house, and install it more, just an upgraded radio, register, all the above. It's more advanced than what you have now, certainly. The only potential downside is you're leaving the existing meter body in, which could have some accuracy lost. It's all about water quality. It sounds like it's have good water here, so there should be no concern there, but certainly these are designed to lose accuracy over time. AWWA will tell you 0.3% on an average, not brand-specific, so after 20 years, these could be as high as 6% inaccurate. So they're going to be on the good side in the favor of your community, but on the downside, it's not going to favor your, your budget.
Just one question. When you say inaccurate, that's a, it, it doesn't read all of the water.
Correct.
Can, can these water meters speed up and read higher than the water used?
No, that's a farce, and, and I'll stand behind that. If, if somebody in the community thinks that this can run faster, I recommend you apply with Neptune Technology Groups, you'll probably make a lot of money. This design is not, does not go fast. A gallon in is a gallon out. As I brought this cutaway, just to show you that there are parts inside, as it rotates and spin around, whichever brand it is, it doesn't matter, it does wear, and it may not be as sensitive 10 years, 15, 20 years down the road. Don't get me wrong, you could still go find a meter in the ground that's 30 years old, and she may be spot-on, and you can find a new one out there that's 10 years in the ground, and it's 10% off. Those are just some industry averages to help you out. To continue on to bid, the next line under option one would be replacing the meter that's potentially inaccurate and the register all at one, so that would be replacing the whole bit. I put that option in there just because to get in the home is the hard part. Your community works, just like you guys do, they're not home at normal hours, so if you're getting in that home, do we spend a little bit extra dollar to replace the whole unit and call it good? I'm here to kind of consult you on those options. There's no push on either one. At the least, we need to take option A, we'll call it, of option one, to start changing out the registers and radios. We could just do the radios, but quite honestly, that register that you have right now, it's just, it's just a different design from, you know, 20 years ago. It only reads so, so low of what we call resolution. Right now, we can technically detect if there was. Right now, we can technically detect if there was a leak, if it were significant, like 10 gallons an hour. I mean, it'd have to be pretty legit. Right now, this style of register that is more common in the industry can detect a hundredth of a gallon. So we're getting ultra low flow and reports out at a tenth of a gallon. So as we go meter read, we can get indications if there's something to try to help. It's not always that we're able to be 100% proactive, but if we can try to help more with what kind of data we're getting. And jump at me anytime if you have a question, but the final one of that option one is just a little bit more advanced. Same radio, the only difference is, is this meter has moving parts, this one does not. The one that I presented in option, kind of 1A, 1B there, does lose accuracy every time. This option does not. It will stay accurate at 99.9% for the life of it. The only challenge is now you have a battery in here. When that battery goes, it's lights out, you have to access it. Now, the batteries are designed for 23 years with a 10 and 10 warranty. So I think there is some comfort there that, I mean, yes, we will have fail, we'll have failures no matter what we do. No system's perfect. If anybody's telling you that, that's not correct. So you just need to start deciding a little bit of price, you know? Maybe a little bit more technology. Those are things, I'm just here to help your staff. I think it still comes down to doing something proactively to get after at least a solid half-year system, if not even more.
So our current failure mode, if you will, on these meters is, is what, does it have anything to do with the moving parts in the meter itself, or is it just on the radio portion?
Really just on the radio portion, but it comes back to that whole point, we're getting the home to do something. Why not upgrade? With, if we put a brand-new radio on one of the existing meters, we're really not doing a whole lot. We can't detect any leaks really. The radio will, the radio wants to know that, but the red, the meter's only giving it so much information. The only thing you would have defective today really with inside of a meter is if the temperatures in that basement or that home or that meter pit, whatever, went below and froze. The meter is designed to, to break, to salvage the piping. That'd be the only way really this is defective. Or if some sort of piece of debris went through here and destroyed the internal components, which does happen. As you carry down to option two, three, and four, really just kind of the same thing, with just, just a little bit different angle. Option one, I'm really just going after the oldest meters. Option two, I'm kind of going more comprehensive, anything up to that's just not current in general. We can definitely go back and forth and find middle ground there. Maybe, we've talked about even before, our company does do installation. We are a licensed contractor and plumber. I did put a number on there to give a concept of what it'd be for us to come out. So even if we just said, hey, we don't want to make this too big of a project, or how do we spread this out over five years? Those are all viable options.
Can you explain the, like, option three is the same number of units, option one as option one, but the pricing is pretty significantly larger? Is that something to do with the X tier wiring antenna? Is that what that is?
Yep, so option one and three, it's the same quantity. It's just a different style of, of installation. Right now, this is what we call integrated, the radio's integrated into the register. By far most popular, it's strong, it's a great system. The wiring is the weakest component of any system for any brand. It is just little tiny wires that people can cut, an animal could chew, moving a box and clipping it. There's so many things that that wire is just not overly strong. So this is just a great version that we came up with where it's all potted, you're not going to replace the battery, it's, it's built in. So option three is the same quantities, but using a radio and mounting it on the outside of the home, or at least up in a rafter. And that does take a bit more with our installation team. So you'll see that installation price will be higher. I don't charge different for if the meter were to be single with a mount, a wired radio or it's integrated, I make that more of an option, not a selling point, if you will.
Is there a benefit to having the antenna mounted up in the rafter that we would see?
If, if you want to get into like a complex system where you have antennas around, it is preferred to try to get the radio outside the home, or at least certainly up in a rafter. There, there are some benefits of looking at those more complex systems. I sell both, we sell both a lot. There's many pros and cons. I'm very, very just confident with our drive-by system where you, what you currently have now. I think it's, if you're to say, hey, what's going to get us the furthest down the road like we did with these radios? I'm going to tell you one of these two with your current radio system you have. There's no need to replace that infrastructure in my mind, it's fairly new, it can always be upgraded. Yeah, you spend a little time driving around, but I, I think the meter industry is kind of plagued with this desire to do all these bells and whistles that really just, I, I challenge some of it why we do it. And we sell them all the time, don't get me wrong, I just try to kind of, why do you want that? What is the, the point behind that? Are you really want to spend another 100, 150,000 with higher annual fees for, for what? Right. That's kind of how I am about it, but we do sell them all the time. Maybe big, big cities might have that because driving around could be more challenging, not as cost-effective, and some even have security problems, no doubt. So to kind of go back to your questions, option one and three are the same quantity, just a different angle of installation. And options two and four are the same quantity, once again, just with those two different installations.
Do we have any money? We don't have any money budgeted?
No. What, no, we don't. Water fund is doing okay, but you got to remember this is our revenue coming in. Staff is leaning more towards option one, get those older units replaced before we go through another winter. March was a lot better. We did not see, a lot of them, some of them came back even in red, but really get it ahead of it and get those older ones changed out. Whether you go with register only or meter complete, I somewhat agree with Brad, if you're in there, change out the whole meter, they're upwards of 18 to 20 years old, those 751 of those are upwards of 18 to 20 years old. So staff would lean towards option one.
Want, option one with the register and the meter? Is that what I heard out of you?
And then to have them do the install, correct, Brian? Because they can do scheduling, get people in the homes, nights and weekends.
That would be our preference. The biggest, it, it doesn't take long to put the meter in. What takes the time is staff time, is scheduling, trying to coordinate with those property owners to make sure their home, we're not going to go into their house unless somebody's there. The other nice thing is they will come in on nights and weekends. The other you need to remember is, right now, we're just looking for kind of a preference because this is a bid project. It's well over the $50,000 bid range. So we would need to prepare some bid documents specifying those meters and reads. So you don't, you're not approving anything tonight, just kind of give us your general consensus as to which way you would like us to move forward.
I would agree with number one, meter complete if we're in there 18 to 20 years old.
I would agree. Agree. Sounds good.
I would also like to note that this is one of the few projects that you guys will have. Nothing against any projects brought forth tonight, but they're all a cost. This is one of the few that does have a return investment. It might be three years, it might be six years, but I promise you, you have made money off what you've already put in 20 years ago, and then some.
I would, I would assume probably over the next few years, we'll have a bid packet.
Few months.
Few.
Weeks.
Yeah. They obviously aren't going to get 1,700 probably done in a year, so we'll probably do 501 year, you know, whatever we can get in is what we'll do. But I would say a bid packet will probably be every year for the next few years to get them changed out. Once we get through the 1,700, I think we'll probably just continue and we'll have to continue to keep, get caught up because we are a little bit behind on that.
So one question for you, sir, since we have you here. If we were to get into a rotation, what would, what would you say a good rotation would be? So if we get a rotation of replacing 10%, so every 10 years we go through the cycle, what, what would you recommend?
Well, first, the biggest number is that 1,751, and this is correct, a very realistic data. I think we just pulled this maybe a week and a half, two weeks ago. So other than what Dale put in the last few days, this is very accurate information. That 1,751 would probably have to be the most urgent in upfront. We'll go back on you a little bit. We, we, we can do about, we just finished a job where we did 11,001 a year, so my crew can, we can rock. We staff up for whatever's needed, so don't get me wrong, but we also want to do what's right. So whether we did 500 that first year, that might not be a bad thing to swing at, is 500, and then Dale's, you know, Brawley and Dale's team can absolutely just kind of maintain some of those other things outside of that scope and come back and do another 500. I just don't know if we do 500 and 500 and 500, if that 17, you know, that we have up there, that's three more years on the life of those, that once again are not past their warranty, they're, they're just past their life expectancy. So that'd be the only thing, is kind of managing that. Do we take a first swing at that, maybe half that? We can also come in and do-
By the time we get the bid and the bid packet and all that stuff out this year, we may be halfway through the year. So we're hope, probably would hope, hope to get 500 to 600. If we can get 700 this year, that might be tight. And then next year, I would say probably get the rest of those, at least 18 to 20-year-old ones, and then move into the next ones.
Kind of that next phase, maybe it's that next line where there's only, you know, 200 or so, maybe half of that line with 601. And you guys will also-
Is there a guarantee for how, I mean, what's their warranty on them?
The industry standard on anything with a battery is 20 years, but it's 10 years full, 10 years prorated. It's not a full 20.
So what we would probably look to is, is start replacing these meters when they're 15 years old, just get on a rotating cycle. So every year after all of these are in, we'll just replace, you know, one fifteenth of the meters.
And I think that's a good goal. I always tell people, if you can get to 15 years, you've won the battle, anything past is.
One thing, having them installed too, they'll work nights, they'll work weekends, they'll do all the paperwork, they'll get out the mailers for people to call them for appointments, so they do all kind of that legwork too, and then they work after hours. So that's another benefit to work with them.
It, I would say it's kind of funny, the, the meter, even though it's way more expensive, almost becomes the, not the thing we're talking about, it's the install, that's the imperative piece, we're an extension of your, your utility.
Okay, we'll rely on you guys in the interim between the bid package and this to figure out some way, you're not going to cover me for the first thousand?
Well, we can talk about that. Uh, one thing I would throw, we do work with other utilities in the area, Sioux Falls being the largest now, it's meter only, not radio. But this may be a question to your attorney, if there, sometimes there are ways to merge those, I don't know if that's appropriate to ask, but there are ways that we've done with multiple utilities where they say, all right, we're going to hook onto the Sioux Falls contract or-
Oh, yeah.
Okay, the Brandon contract, that'd be, not Brandon, I'm sorry, Brookings. We do have other contracts that stay current that are current now, we can honor those pricings through 19 and continue to do that stuff.
I just wanted to thank the residents that we have done so far. We've actually done pretty well in getting ahold of them and get into their houses, so I appreciate everybody's support on that and getting in there. We did 280 roughly, kind of in January, February timeframe, so I just appreciate all, everybody and we'll be needing more, some, more assistance in the future on that, so.
If I could, just drop off packet, I, I, it's just some info on the meters and some of the specs, nothing fancy, but just at least a few things for you guys to read if you'd like to. Is that okay?
So the only thing, Lisa, would be, since we have this brand of meter, it'd be a sole source agreement for that type of meter, so-
Thank you.
When we're doing the bidding, just as long as we can spec that we don't change brands because of radio communication. I know I deal with that sometimes where you're kind of doing sole source, just play that-
What we'll do is we'll get a list of the other communities in South Dakota that are currently doing this, because we can go off their bids, which would save a tremendous amount of time.
And then we can get it rolling faster.
So we'll, we'll get a list from you if you can give us that list of the same meter, radio, read, and installation.
Understood.
Brad, you're very good at what you do, you're very passionate, thank you. I got to give you a little bad time, I'm an accountant, so it's, it's tough to be passionate about something that's that-
I know.
Abstract.
I brought Carol along, she's my counterpart here. Yeah, I know, it's really bad. I appreciate your time though, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Drainage at 509 Elm.
We did talk about this a little bit already, it's in that same neighborhood. Yep.
That's what I thought, yep. Uh, so you're going to, you have a plan to try to-
Yep. We have a couple, we have a study and then our RFP will go out hopefully in the next couple of months.
Say that again?
We have a study coming up, the stormwater study, and then an RFP for the core area. That'll be coming out in the next couple of months. I'll bring that to console.
Thank you.
For that, for that quarter, if you remember when we did Aspen Boulevard four or five years ago, we included storm sewer with the intention that we would be running storm sewer lines up second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So this detention facility down here at the south end of Main Street has been designed to handle that runoff. So that's in the plans.
It's stubbed out, right?
Yep, it's stubbed out to the north side of, of Aspen, so that when we start doing those, those streets, we can just connect and, and go upstream.
Excellent. Okay, item 1012C, proposal for capacity analysis for Force Main.
This is a small proposal from HDR. If you remember when we did our rates, or when you were looking at our rates for sewer, it was brought up that we will need another line to Sioux Falls in the near future, whether that's three years or five years down the road. I'd really like HDR just to kind of look at that, look at what we have now, look at the capacity of it, and kind of mark out some of those triggers on when we actually need it, you know? And then it'll also give us something to bring to Sioux Falls, to where we can start planning and coordinating that project.
It's like an amount not to exceed 4,700?
Yes.
Second?
Motion is second to approve the proposal for capacity analysis for the Force Main from HDR, an amount not to exceed 4,700. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Review the, review and award the contract for the 2019 Main Avenue Interceptor Sewer Project.
So this was bid out on the 20th, and we have two contractors that bid on it. One was H&amp;W and the other was Metro Construction. H&amp;W was the lowest bid at $4,575,745.85, which is about 900,000 more than what our cost estimate was.
Did you have a meeting with Stockwell?
I, I did have a meeting with Stockwell last Friday.
I'm, I'm here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And then I also did talk to the contractors. I did want to get kind of a feel for if we did put this project on hold for another year, if we would save much. Their opinion was no, the contractors' opinions were no. I don't know that it would save enough to justify holding this project up another year, just because some of that, most of the cost was in the mobilization, there's a little bit in dewatering, and then some of the cost estimates for the pipe were just a little bit off. So I don't see those costs going down in the next year. So I'm still recommending that we go ahead with this project.
I guess I'd like to know how we got off so much. So if you, yeah, come on up.
Mitch Merigan with Stockwell Engineers. You know, with this, this year's been a little difficult with estimates and whatnot with the nature of a lot of the projects that are out there. We did feel we probably underestimated the market at this time with this project. And, you know, in our process of doing our estimates, we are reaching out to contractors and whatnot, and we had some of those conversations early on. I really think this is a result of the market right now with the number of, amount of work that's out there for the contractors. Just having two bidders kind of signifies that there might not have been as much interest in the project. We did talk to the contractors afterwards and we, you know, probably underestimated the complexity of this project. This is a project that's very, when you really get into the details of it, it's pretty complex. The sewer's very deep, it's bedded in sand. When we do estimates, there's not a lot of similar projects to compare it to, so that's probably where we were lacking in our estimate. Again, we weren't, when we talked to contractors early on, we felt we were in the right ballpark where we would see bids. But we just, with the, I think with the amount of work that's out there for the contractors right now, you can see on their next bid, we had, you know, quite a bit more bidders and we can see that they're very competitive. When we only have two up there and they're that far apart, you know, we question, you know, it's not real apparent how competitive the bids are, but we can say that if, to get this job done this year, this is the cost to get it done this year.
Okay, so I, I also reached out to the construction companies and both of them said that they had plenty of capacity, so- and both of them said that they had plenty of capacity, so I really don't believe that there is an impact in their the market right now, because the discussions I had with them, they should, they said that this would fit in. So I'm a little concerned with that. When I look at mobilization, both of these, the mobilization is much higher than a standard percentage. The other concern that I have with this is typically, if your estimate is off by this much, you may be missing potential bidders. We didn't get any bidders from necessarily out of state. When you're looking at a, instead of a three and a half million, a four and a half to five million dollar project, it could potentially bring different bidders. At this point, my recommendation would be to look at rebidding it, if that would be something that Tammy would be okay with, because with this estimate being this low compared to the actual, in my world, in the federal government, we would throw these bids out and start over.
With you guys being off by, what, nine hundred thousand, million dollars? Is there any repercussions? Back to us.
Well, I mean, as far as getting the project done this year, that is, that would affect the timeline for this project. This project has an aggressive deadline to it. There's a lot of work that needs to happen, we feel the contractor needs to start right away in May to meet the deadline that's in the contract. If we were to rebid, we'd probably have to look at pushing some of the work into the following year. And if, to re, to rebid right now, and two contractor schedules are going to be more full for this year.
Tam? Is this a, does the council know, is this a project that we delayed from last year?
Yep.
Boy, folks.
Which we should have done.
Yes. There's a lot of things that are contingent upon it.
Justin Oakland, three twelve East Holly Boulevard, Oakland Homes. We've kicked the can down the road a long, long time. There's concerns in the core area of town, and Tim, I know you're a big proponent of that, and this is where we start, right? We started at the lift station to Sioux Falls, we started at the bottom of the hill. Next up is Main Street. We go first through eighth, so if we delay this, we delay first through eighth. And I know you've been beating the streets, okay? I recently bid out some streets significantly higher priced than a year ago when we built streets in this community, and we struggled to get bids. We had some trades, we sent out six requests, we got one bid. Mobilization is a joke, okay? It, it's a way to get some money up front, right? They need a pay app, they get some money, you load up the mobilization. So I would recommend we quit kicking the can down the road, and we start with Main Street and let's get going.
Tammy, your recommendation was to proceed with the low bid?
It is.
I would agree with that. Sounds like some other, is there a motion for that?
I'll make that motion second.
Motion in a second? Chuck, Brett? Any further discussion?
Where's the extra million dollars coming from on this project?
Well, we're staff is taking a look at, we break down those bid areas, sewer, water, streets, and then those areas that are shared costs, and we typically assign debt service on the bond to each of those areas. Quite frankly, general fund is probably going to have to take up more of a bigger chunk on this project than normal, than what we would normally do, so it would be, water's fine. It's the sewer utility that we would have an issue with. So we're just starting to look at those numbers today, this afternoon. But it will come out of the general fund in either debt service, or you know, we could take a look at doing a cash injection into the project to offset those costs. We'll come back at the, probably the next meeting with a recommendation as to what we would recommend that you do.
I have talked to administration on some of those things, and there are some things that we're probably going to have to forego to get this thing going. And it, that's what it boils down to, we just cannot, as somebody said, kick that can down the road again. It's been delayed last year, and we just can't delay it again. And one of those things I talked to the administration about was what, signs, signings, I think there was two hundred thousand dollars in there for that. That it's a low lying fruit, I would think.
Yeah, we, we can come up with the funds, if you wanted to do it cash upfront on this year's budget, we could move so, we could delay some expenditures, that might be tough. I'm looking more at, as far as debt service, we would bond for it. And then the general fund would pay a larger percentage of the debt service than the percentage of the project bears. So instead of a third, a third, and a third, it might be half general fund, and twenty-five percent water, twenty-five percent sewer.
Right.
So we're, we're starting to run those numbers now. But you are correct, we, we did delay this from last year because we got late in the bidding season, and this is a domino effect, this, you know, that sewer line we've talked about is about eighty plus percent full, and that is the main sewer interceptor that serves everybody, well, not everybody, doesn't certain blocks or west of Sioux, but, you know, if we've got growth out on the east side, that all comes down to this intersection at Main and Aspen. We need to increase the size of that pipe. If we don't, it could impact our growth for the next few years, and it certainly would impact the reconstruction in the core area.
Well, and, you know, I don't, we don't want to limit our growth over in Justin's area. The other thing is, our, our residents are kind of queued up for this, they know it's coming, and, you know, let's, let's get the pain over with and be done with it.
I'm still, I'm, I'm on board with this, but I want to know, is there any repercussions with Stockwell for, you know, giving us a low bid?
You know, maybe planning wise, it's obviously not ideal. If they did have a perfect cost estimate, we would still be paying that same price, so.
I understand that, but a million dollars.
The biggest, the biggest bid item, I went through them today, the biggest bid item was the mold charge. About seven hundred thousand dollars over the mold cost estimate. And I saw that mold charge in about, swallow, put a nice swallow in the tongue. That was, that's a huge mold charge. Yes, and that, that typically what a contractor does, and correct me if I'm wrong, engineers in the audience, if they're nervous about a project, or if they think they're going to have a cost overrun and incur penalties, if they don't think that the, if they think the schedule's too aggressive for them actually doing it, they will bid, they will build into their bid penalty days. So if they, this is a six month project, I think.
Right.
So they may be looking at going, well, with our schedule and with the complexity of the project, we might be at seven months, so we're going to, we're going to bid in or build in thirty penalty days.
Mold charge is totally due to the implied messiness of this project.
Yes, this is a complex job. We typically estimate that mold to be about five to eight percent is usually what we estimate.
And there, this one with H&amp;W is eighteen percent, so it's, it's significantly higher.
There is a lot of risk involved. It is a very complex problem, our project.
Motion in a second to approve the low bidder of
H&amp;W.
H&amp;W. In the amount of I'm getting there, four point five seven five million. Christina, call and roll.
Ashton.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Fish.
Aye.
Howzman.
Aye.
Parsons.
Aye.
Wakefield.
Aye.
Sorry. All right, motion carries. Item number twelve E, review the award for contract on Holly Boulevard improvements.
This would be for the street portion of the project. We had seven bidders on this portion. First rate was the lowest at two million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. So it came very close to the cost estimate, just a little bit under.
Make a motion to.
Motion in a second to approve the low bid from First Rate Excavate, the amount of two million two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Streets must be more sought after projects, I guess. Any questions on the bid? Bid is approximately two hundred thousand dollars under architect or engineer estimate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried for that part of the project. Thank you. Down to item twelve F, contract for the satellite leak, leak detection, detection project that we've talked about. Drone situation, isn't it?
With a satellite. So whenever the satellite goes over, which is expected to be April eleventh, then they'll take an image of the town.
We better get it approved then, I'm looking for a motion. Motion in a second to approve the project with the satellite leak detection. Is approximately five thousand dollars, forty-seven hundred something.
Yeah.
Any questions from the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need to go into executive session? For
One twenty-five, two, one?
One twenty-five, two point one? Can I have a motion? Motion in second to go into executive session for one twenty-five, two point one, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Do you have contact information?
Two.